I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
This is Casper. Yes, here. Mr. Level.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connell.
Here.
Mr. Parnell.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Here. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
And was it Mr. Parnell and Mr. Level?
That's what I heard.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. All right. We have a full house tonight. Certainly since our last meeting, there have been many tragic events that have happened in our world as has been happening far too often unfortunately. We had a special meeting yesterday where we had many topics, but safety was certainly one of the issues that we discussed. We talked about many options that we've been discussing both before that had been on our horizon both before the incidents in Florida and we continue to discuss. We all have the best interest of our students in mind. We're all looking at the best way to protect those students. We may not all agree on how to do that and we'll continue to look for the best way to do that. We're going to continue to meet on those different items. We're going to pull together our safety committee and continue to talk about all different options for the best way to protect those students. And I'll turn it over to Matt and he can talk about some different particular items as well.
Sure. Certainly with what happened last week in Florida, that brings us to a heightened sense of alertness obviously and feel certainly for the families and victims in Florida and for what the school family and students are going through. As Mrs. Schaefer alluded to, we did meet yesterday. We have a lot of things that are in the works currently. We've had a lot of things in the works even before this tragedy happened. One of the things that we are doing and working with now is current practices with law enforcement and fire departments. So we had a meeting last week at Mrs. O'Connell's invitation to me, I guess, with Chief Prince from Westchester Fire Department, but he also had the police department there from Westchester, Butler County Sheriff's Office was represented, Liberty Township Fire and other municipalities around the area, not just Westchester and Liberty, but all of us. So we talked about current practices. We talked about things that we need to work on collaboratively and so that came up as well. And we have another meeting coming up next week.
In March.
In March. So that'll be an ongoing effort. I would say too to sort of echo Mrs. Schaefer's comments and what we've been talking about, nothing is off the table per se. We're looking at what are the best options for our kids and for our staff. Just as a few reminders, we are Alice trained, which certainly has helped prepare our staff as we move forward. We also have other safety protocols that we're not going to make public, that we do just as a safety and sort of cautiousness for our students and for our staff. I was approached just the other day, Friday I believe, from the Coach Hall Foundation out of the Cleveland area who'd like to do another school safety summit in this area and asked us to host for all the schools in our region. So certainly of course I said yes to that, so we'll be working with them. But we're working with our kids too because our kids have a lot of thoughts and perceptions about school safety as well. So we continue to do things like that. Is there anything that I missed that you want me to hit?
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the families and the students and the community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
No. You know, the only other thing I say and I've mentioned it before is our high school principals are working with our kids about how they want to deal with some of this and talk about what that looks like. And they're actually having open office hours later this week to have those conversations with student leaders, but any student.
Jenny, any comments?
Just to add to that, in 2013, to remind everyone, part of the levy was safety and security. And so through that generosity of our community, we worked on safe and secure entrances for each one of our buildings. We also increased the number of SROs district wide. So just to echo what you're saying is that the necessary resources that we need as far as the district to protect and our students and staff, we're ready to do so too. But just to kind of remind us too that part of that last levy was about safety and security as well.
And for anybody who may not know, an SRO is a school resource officer.
Correct.
All right. And with that, we move to our favorite part of every meeting, which is recognizing our wonderful students, our precious resources. And with that, tonight we have the pleasure of recognizing Javier Cox. And Betsy, you get to take the lead on that.
My favorite part. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan. Tonight's student spotlight belongs to a very compassionate second grader from Adena Elementary School. Thank you to Mr. Maddon, principal at Adena, for bringing his story to light. Javier Cox wants to be a botanist when he grows up. He also has the passion to help those who are less fortunate. Last summer Javier and his family had a small plot of land where they had a vegetable garden. Instead of keeping the crops to themselves, Javier had the idea to donate the crops to reach out Lakota. To feed his passion for botany, Javier received an arrow garden for Christmas and is now attending to a thriving herb garden. He has recently learned that Mariah Pie in Norwood will be using his herbs in the food they prepare to serve the community. We're going to show a little video.
So there's this amazing, amazing place in the, in Norwood, which if you're not as many, Norwood's like part of the city. It's called Mariah Pie. And what it is, is there's people, a bunch of people in the community who came in and bought houses and they are urban farmers. So they farm like in small pieces of property and then they take the fresh food and they opened up a pizza place. So every Friday they make fresh pizza with the ingredients that they make through the summer and they serve it duty free to the community, to all the people. So everybody who works there pretty much doesn't even volunteer. Then they ask people for like a stack and so like if I came in and made like a crazy amount of money because they're so freaking awesome and it's a nonprofit, I mean that's really awesome. I'm learning the way these people live, are the most simple living. They eat, actually the kids that live in the community help them farm. They have farming camps and then the kids can eat their pizza for free that they help farm. It's really helping hands-on with their city. Anyways, we've been there multiple times because we know a lot of people in this community and we've done a lot through Save Families and just whatever. And my son Javier has grown a herb garden in his bedroom.
Hi, this is Javier in the arrow garden. This is in my bedroom, on my desk and it's like really cool. And there's a strong smell. It's really good smell.
Isn't that cool? And I'm so excited because I contacted the owners because Javier really wanted to share his herbs with Mariah Pie to use, to serve. I'm getting ready to tell him that not only are they going to use his herbs, but he gets to serve. And he's going to be so excited. I'm just really proud of my son. So stay tuned. I'm going to go back from Mariah Pie. And guess what? They want to use your herbs and they said you could help. Isn't that cool? Are you excited?
So it is my pleasure. Thank you so much for letting me show that very candid video. I wanted you to see my son's response because it was really great. And it's so exciting that we have just a minute to talk about something that we are so passionate as a family and that is being world changers. And something that they didn't show at the end of the video that I just wanted to briefly touch on was that when my husband and I talk to our children, we reference them as world changers now at five, eight, nine. And they were world changers at four, seven, and eight. They are world changers now. They're working, we're working together as a family to do what we can. So we do things with Safe Families, which if you're not familiar with that, it's kind of like a foster care light situation with the purpose of reunification. And we do host in other situations. We lead soup kitchens. We do farmland and whatnot. So Javier and my other children as well have kind of picked on, kind of caught on since they've been doing it since they were in diapers. And I'm really excited because Javi had this great idea. So we have a little PowerPoint presentation for you and I'm going to hand it over to my son Javier.
How I turned my love of plants into an arrow garden. I am eight years old. I attended, I attend Adena Elementary. I have two brothers. I started my love of plants when my grandparents brought me a Venus flytrap from Arizona. Community garden. My mom, brothers, and I lease a plot of land and grow vegetables for the local food bank. Community garden. We turn in, we turn in our harvest at the end of the growing season. Arrow garden. I got an arrow garden as a Christmas present this past year. It allows me to grow my own plants inside year-round. Mariah Pie. There's a local pizza shop where children in the community help grow vegetables and ingredients for free meals on Friday nights. Aubrey Mariah. I asked my mom if I could give my herbs to Mariah Pie to make pizzas for the community. They gladly accepted my offer and I got to bring my bounty and service to patrons. The future. Together with my mom's motorcycle group and the generosity of some friends, we will be growing an even bigger garden this year with more friends to help. The lesson. You can serve and love the world at any age with the passion you have been given.
One thing I wanted before we conclude. So I had served pizza earlier and incidentally, we as a family went down to Mariah Pie on Friday and they used my son's herbs and my sons actually served. So while they were there, they were serving the patrons. So what you will enjoy tonight is actually a grown from my son.
That was awesome. Thank you. So.
Sorry, Matt.
Go ahead.
Javier, we have never gotten pizza delivered to us at a board meeting. Thank you very much for that. I have two sons and they're adults now, but when they were your age, they had science experiments growing in their room as well. They were not this productive. I am really impressed with what you're giving back to your community. So thank you for taking your time and energy to do that. That's great.
I just had a comment. I just want to commend you for everything that you've done and there are many, many adults that go through their life wondering if they've made a difference in the world. And you don't have that problem. You already have. So congratulations to you. Well done.
You did a great job. The pizza's amazing. And I got an arrow garden for Christmas, so I might be calling you for some. Because currently it's still in the box. Nice job.
I'm fortunate enough to know you guys outside of just this situation and you know, what you said about Aaron, what you said about instilling within them being world changers at an early age. I know that's something that you all are passionate about and you can see it. And Javier, I, this is amazing. Your pizza's amazing. Your heart is amazing. What you're doing for the community is going to have far lasting impact. And I just love the fact that you guys go over there, you work together as a family and you bring friends alongside you because that's what it's, that's what it's all about. And maybe you can convince me to come do some gardening with you.
Yeah, we have a really large plot that a friend is letting us use this year. And I have a women's off-road moto group and all of our families are going to farm the land together for a larger purpose. So it's really cool.
Thank you for being a positive change.
Absolutely.
So we would like to take our picture with you, if that's okay. So we will come around if you can come up and join us. And it's up to you if mom and brother would like to join us. Two brothers. Oh, two brothers. I didn't see the other. Oh, there he is. He was hiding in the back row.
Look at him.
They were all back there. There we go.
Look at that. They're adorable.
This is Casper.
Every week I try, every week I try to hide and she calls me out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the pizza. Thank you so much. They're adorable.
All right. If I can just go ahead and proceed with our first staff spotlight that we've done, first one in a long time. Mrs. Hutzelman, if you want to come on up, we have that to beat. So I know, right? Right? It all fits.
I want to give up now.
Did you bring any food? That's okay. I'd like to introduce Jenny Hutzelman. She is a second grade teacher at Cherokee. Huge passion for STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. I had the pleasure of seeing her in action probably three weeks ago, a month ago. She did a cardboard arcade in her classroom, one of the coolest things that I have ever seen with, the kids were so excited, the different, the kids wanted me to obviously play them. I wanted to beat them at different games, but the kids did a really good job of talking about the science that was involved and just the engineering that went into their projects too. So something they were very, very proud of that I got to see. I don't know if that's part of your presentation or not. Okay. You have other good things.
He has a couple videos that he's going to show. It was so hard to pick because I get so excited.
That was amazing.
Yeah. And I didn't even break, like to pick the cardboard arcades, I think it's all on Seesaw, but I could be here all night.
You might need to talk, you might need to take 10 seconds and talk about Seesaw. But I can tell you have a lot of passion, so I'm just going to fold what I was going to say and I'm just going to turn it over to you.
All right. Well, I'm going to try to read because I have so much to say and I seriously get so excited because I love my job and I love teaching science and I love the passion that I see in the kids. And so I get carried away. I'm going to read what I wrote because I have so much to say and I'm afraid I'll like leave stuff out. And then at the end, if you have questions or whatever, and I could talk about Seesaw, it is amazing. So I'm going to read and then we can talk about that. Anyway, thank you for inviting me. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. As I already said, I seriously love my job. My favorite thing to teach is definitely science. I get excited just talking about it. My favorite science units are those that I can integrate into all areas of the curriculum. For example, in our most recent course in motion unit, we learned important science vocabulary and word work. We learned to write like scientists during writing by conducting experiments with Rs and ramps as well as constructing catapults with shot ping pong balls and cotton balls. We had to try to hypothesize which ones were going to go farther and why. Then we wrote lab reports like real sciences to record those hypotheses, materials, procedures, and conclusions. We read lots and lots of books about force and motion during reading and during science, my paper card, we used the design process to build roller coasters, designed Rube Goldberg machines, built bridges. And as a culminating project that we talked about was the cardboard arcade. In the cardboard arcade, we planned, the kids planned and created arcade games out of cardboard. And let me just tell you my classroom. By the end, I really couldn't even get to my desk. I had to like move things on like credit card bank spaces. Kids were bringing cardboard boxes in. I'm not talking little cardboard boxes, I'm talking huge cardboard boxes that they got Christmas presents in. I couldn't even literally get to my desk. I had so much stuff in my room. Anyway, out of cardboard, other common everyday items such as straws, plastic spoons, empty toilet paper rolls, whatever they could find. I really love that the kids took ownership in collective materials. I was getting emails from parents. One of them sent to me a note of apology because she said her son just dumped her by being every single time he took out her recycling. And she didn't realize for a long time that he was bringing in empty yogurt containers, just pretty much anything that he thought could be used in our arcade. And then when she figured it out, she said she felt horrible. I said, no worries. I'm excited that they're taking ownership. Let it come. So it did. Our counselor, let's see. We invited parents, teachers, principals, and our counselor, Audrey even invited members at the board office. And that was nice enough. And I'll have to say, you were awesome. You were hands-on with the kids. The kids just, they had no idea who you were. They just loved that you seriously were trying to beat them and I don't think you won. They thought that it was awesome and you were hands-on and I really do appreciate that you took the time. Each kid made them feel special. You took the time to make the comments outside on Seesaw. It was phenomenal. So thank you for that. All the projects were student-driven. I could not believe what they came up with and I'm going to go off of what I said because I just have to tell you when the one came up with the wind machine idea, I was like, that's a really great idea, but can you tell me about how you're going to do that? Oh yeah, I got my dad's leaf blower. Remember my dad's leaf blower? I'm like, leaf blower in our classroom? I said, that's a phenomenal idea. I said, but I'm not really sure how a leaf blower is going to work inside. Let's see if we can think of a plan B. He's like, well, you have the fan from Windows. You know, we did windmills and when we did the structures, can we use your fan? And I said, sure, we use the fan. Anyway, the counselor, like we had so much stuff outside my classroom that the custodian came in, she was like, can we take this junk plate? I'm like, no, it's not junk, it's in your way. It's to come in and see what they're doing. And so when I explained what was going on, she was like, well, I have a battery operated leaf blower. They could just use a leaf blower. So anyway, we had that. It was awesome. They were very student-driven and I really tried to, like, I really did not think that the wind machine was going to work, but I tried to just step back, let them do it and it was amazing. I mean, when parents would step up, they got this box that they made out of, I don't know, 15 different boxes. They were cutting, they were measuring. I can't even tell you how much duct tape we went through to put it in a structure that they could actually stand in. And they're like, do you have like plastic wrap in your cabinet? Because I have like everything in the world that you can imagine in my cabinets. My colleagues over here, Katie, needs something she knows that she's going to find it in my room because I pretty much keep everything. They needed a roof that was see-through because they said it would be creepy if they went in there and there was no light. And it would be too dark if they didn't put into what was going on. So they had a clear plastic roof so that it wouldn't be creepy. Anyway, it was amazing. They seriously all worked and the fact that they were student-driven, they came up with all the ideas. We had a claw machine complete with a ramp, but after they got it, they put down the ramp so that it could be delivered outside, which was pretty cool. E-ball, ball toss, feedback toss, soccer, spin the wheel. They came up with using a fidget spinner. They glued it on and so they actually spun. They use a straw and they put, what do you call them, like pushpins in and then they hot glued them back so that when they spun it, it wouldn't come out. The thing seriously worked. Catapult basketball, pinco, which is pretty awesome. I mean, the sticks, yeah, I could go on and on. It is very, very cool.
There was ice hockey with magnets.
Ice hockey, yeah. The magnets, they had the ice hockey and underneath, they used the magnet with a magnet on top that was a circle. And then they had a marble, so the end course was magnetism. And so they could move the puck up on top with a magnet and I think that might be one that's awesome. Every single game really worked. It was amazing. Before the arcade, each group created a sneak peek video explaining the forces at work in their game so their classmates could learn from each other. At the arcade, iPads were also set up in the hallway outside our classroom to allow parents, teachers, and other visitors to give feedback to the students. When I got home that day, I had 155 notifications. I approve everything because I just want to make sure that everything's good to go when it goes on there. So I spent a long time on that evening approving all the notifications, but it was amazing. You can do voice comments, you can do written comments. Very cool. There were so many comments that I had never even seen this part where you have to like push a thing to see all comments. The kids, it was awesome. So anyway, the next day, the students tried to listen to their feedback. The feedback that they got, talk about putting confidence. They were flying high. They thought it was awesome. In fact, I still have students building arcade games. One student has his own complete arcade with probably eight games in his garage. Parents said that he has taken over the garage. They have to park on the driveway. He picked with an office. He's created one passes. So if you want to come and play all the games for a special price, purchase the one pass. And his parent, his mom even bought tickets so that players can actually earn tickets when they play. Anyway, how versed that. So how did this all start? I've always loved science. It's always been my passion. But last year I taught at the STEAM lab. Val came to me like, I don't know, three days before school and said, I think you would be really great in the STEAM lab. And so I said yes. Anyway, it was then that I saw how important and valuable the design process was. So since then, I've tried to incorporate that into my teaching pretty much every opportunity that I get. And I've learned that it doesn't just happen in science. It's applicable in math, writing, social studies, pretty much across the board. And going through like, if we had time to look at the 50 million things up there, a lot of it is using the design process. So things that I do differently that I didn't do before that experience in the STEAM lab, I now do an in-class monthly STEAM challenge. We've created pencil boxes with catapults, created pumpkin elevators, designed goalposts and kicking devices as well as slazing ramps. Tomorrow is February, they try to do it at the end of each month. Tomorrow they're going to be doing zip lines to deliver packages. March, they're going to be doing wind-powered cars, you know, because of 20 in March. April, this is my nose thing, fourth quarter is my science and I've never really been that, not my favorite science unit to teach, so I thought I needed to find something that's exciting. I also, like I said, try to integrate things. So there's a book called One Plastic Bag. If you haven't read it, you should probably read it. It's about people, these women in West, in Zambia, West Africa, who their village was, there was pollution, the goats were dying because they were eating the plastic bags, people were dying of malaria because of all the pollution. And so they decided to talk about being, you know, like, you know, changers in our environment. So they started making the bags and making these purses. And it's like, oh great, we could use that. And so this is what I did Saturday morning to make sure that it really worked. And I didn't have a dress on there because I did not have a dress for you. If you need, this is seriously made out of plastic bags. It works. It's like heavy enough and it truly turns and works. So the kids are going to be making these. And today I just came up with this idea. They're going to be selling these at lunch and then we're going to be purchasing something to give to Cherokee because we want, the standard, like I said, is living things change in the environment. Not only are we saving the planet by upcycling these plastic bags into something that is useful instead of throwing them away. By the way, did you know that one plastic bag can afford $4,000? Because we are breaking into tiny pieces and it never ever be used. So we're going to be making a difference in the environment and the money that we use when we sell these at lunch, student council is going to help us out. As second graders, you know, they might need a little help. They're, they're pretty good at counting money, but we're going to sell those and then hopefully purchase something to make a positive impact on our school environment at Cherokee. So that's, I get started and then I lose. Anyway, that's in class, my monthly in class. I always do, also do a monthly family STEAM challenge. And the students complete challenges at home and post videos using a different app called Flipgrid. And that way all the students can see what their classmates have done and they also, again, learn from each other. Students have made candy towers, boats to hold cargo, parachutes to help single-plant safely and gently in the event that a slave breaks down. Sliding ramps, paper airplanes, so see who can travel the greatest distance. You might ask why all these STEAM challenges? It's a lot of science. Like I said, I do integrate it, but I think that STEAM challenges are so valuable. They require problem solving, critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, decision-making. I could keep going. There's so many different benefits. And these are all skills that our students are going to need to be successful in the future. The students also learn to be risk takers. On my door, I say, on my door, be a risk taker, be brave, take a chance. If you don't get off the starting line, you can never win the race. And so they know that that's, you learn by making mistakes. And I think that's one thing that they really have learned this year and I'm excited about that. So I'll end with two stories and then I'll sit down. I think these stories just illustrate that it does make a difference. The first student was working on it in class, one of our in-class monthly steam challenges. And he looked at me and he says, no, I am not, he's really good at school stuff. But for some reason, I am really good at steam challenges. So again, it builds that confidence. So he's willing to take risks and, you know, reading might not be his favorite thing, but he's become a risk-taker. So it's okay to make mistakes. And because of the confidence he's gotten doing these steam challenges, his reading has grown tremendously. The other story that I have, started at a parent-teacher conference at the beginning of the year with a parent, I'm a struggling reader. And the mom shared with me that her son told her that he didn't like it when people said he was creative. He just wished somebody would say he was smart. Well, I bet you can guess what my mission has been this year. Every time I get a chance, I tell him that he's smart. Anyway, he's the one that has the whole arcade in his garage, by the way. Every chance I get, I let him know that I think he's smart. And I guess it worked because this past Friday, we've been working on autobiographies. And fourth chapter, they had to tell how they were special. They had to choose a character trait that told how they were special. It almost makes me cry. Can you guess what he said?
I'm smart.
I'm smart.
Yeah.
So again, thank you for the opportunity to share with you about my past. So let me show us. This one was an in-class video. And it's a revolver machine that a second-year-old made. So this is amazing. And there's another one that I conference with them because they have to literally go through the process of, you know, imagining. They have to plan. They have to like sketch it and like talk to me, okay, how is this going to work? And there's another video that shows that, but I think it's a little more than five minutes. So how about we just show that? All right, let's see it. You watch this. A revolver machine is a machine that performs exactly that in a complicated way. So that's what they had to do. We were talking about forces in motion and how there were chain reactions. That took an incredible amount of planning. Here's one of the home ones. The home, they had to create a Mayflower that could hold like the most weight. But this is a Flipgrid video that they did.
My name is Sandra and this is my boat. And I used styrofoam, some paper. I used one thousand three, three hundred pennies. And I also used nickel dimes and quarters. And it has my name on it. And it took, the hard part was cutting the sails and making the boat. So bye.
Anyway, that's Flipgrid. And we have like archive museums again, not just science, but archive museums have been amazing for the past and like future stuff, so.
When you said they had to do a Flipgrid video, did they do that or did you do that or?
I didn't do it. This was at home. Yeah, they did it.
So they do the video and everything and they do it in Flipgrid?
My guess is with the music that he had helped from his parents. But there are so many videos on, on there with different topics. Like I said, the one that is kind of a hot topic right now, because that's what we're doing, is our past and present. So in the past, I've always had kids bring in items from the past to show how science and technology have changed, you know, daily life. Well, there's a lot of really cool things that parents don't really want to take the chance that they could get broken. So I'm like, well, you could put them on Flipgrid. So they put them on Flipgrid. And so there's washboards, there's like, there's like old irons, like an old drill, even like cassette players. And the funny thing is I use some of those things, so I guess I'm like old. Yeah.
I am so excited that we brought teacher-staff spotlight to the board meetings along with our student spotlight because it just highlights the amazing things that are happening with our teachers and our staff and our buildings. And I have, I mean, this is amazing. I love watching your passion. It's contagious.
It's so exciting the kids listen. You always say that. I'm like, but it is so exciting.
It's just, I want to go to your room. I just want to do something, right? Like you just get that. And there's no doubt that the kids are learning more than just what the standard is. And that's what, that's what it's about, right? How do you bring in real-life experiences, home experiences, blend everything together in a 21st century way too, right? Like, we're going to do stuff that's going to be out there. And so thank you. Just on behalf of myself, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome to come anytime.
Thank you.
Not really sure what is going to be going on today. It was lots of green screen videos going on with our autobiographies. Yeah, there's lots going on. So yeah, you're welcome anytime.
I think the playground at Cherokee is going to be very fun this spring.
Wow. And as for this too, with the weather, and we talked about, we could maybe do some like double dutch ones and donate. Again, we're trying to, the whole standard is letting things change the environment, how we can be positive changes. So we talked today about how we could donate some to the playground equipment. So I think we could talk about that today.
All right.
Thank you.
I think she could make me like science. Not a fan of science, I think you could make me like science. Your passion is incredible. Thank you for all you do. And thanks to Val for recognizing that you would be great at that.
Yeah, she came in and she's like, if you just love science, I think you would be really good at that. I was like, I'm a planner, I'm a backwards, like I have to know what's at the end before I can tell you what I'm doing tomorrow. And so it was definitely a struggle for me last year because it was like three days before, it really probably wasn't three days, that was not the end of the duration, but probably a week or a week and a half before school. So, but I'm so glad because even like I said, I do love science, but that design process part of it, you know, that it would be more, you know, of a step-by-step, this is kind of a template kind of thing. Like we're doing experiments, but this is so much better, so much more powerful.
Well, let's get together and we'll do a picture.
There's something going on, isn't there? Pretty much. So yeah, if you just email me, I can let you know. Like we're doing zip lines tomorrow. It seriously works. I'm not kidding.
Mr. Rabel, perhaps? I'm sorry. For every twenty-five minutes, they do rugs out of plastic bags.
Well, and not that they look, but you have to be able to knit. How's this, Beth? Can you see me?
I'm a girl. 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 I'm a girl.
And with that, we have our first opportunity for public comment. I have several people who signed in, so we'll, oop, I'm not, I'm a girl, sorry. We have several people who've signed in, so we'll start with those folks. You have three minutes. And if you could state your name and your address. So first, I'll say the person who's at the mic and then the person who is going to be after them so that we can have you in the wings to go quicker. Dan Richards and then Amy Sansing, I believe. So Dan, you start.
Hi, I'm Dan Richards, sixty-six, seventy-seven Station Road. I'm an engineer, design things, test things. And actually, ninety percent of what I've tested over time has had problems and has failed. And I've inadvertently proven things wrong that I didn't have any intention of proving wrong. What's Fort Hood and the Florida schools got in common? Both were disarmed. Both were disarmed. We disarmed our troops. An MP finally showed up and took out the perpetrator in the case of Fort Hood. You didn't have anybody down in Florida, even the school resource officers. Why don't we allow concealed carry of our teachers? Why? Are you going to deal with facts? No, you never want to ruin a good story with a few facts. And that's the point. Are we going to do this touchy-feely? Or are we going to care? What's the history of gun laws in the United States? They've done nothing but just disarm honest-goodness citizens. And the gun is the great equalizer. Where did they start? With the African-Americans. Now that's right. You teach tolerance in your schools? Well, there it is. That's the ugly fact of America that nobody wants to talk about. Now why? And you know what happened down in the South and the violence and the civil rights movement? You have the number-one police officer in this county telling you and allowing, or actually even helping the teachers to become armed if they want to. Five hundred signed up over three days. It isn't as if we don't have teachers that don't want to help the situation and fight for the kids. At least five hundred teachers of this county care. Well, there it is. Do you care or not? And Lakota is just like, I look at it, thirty-two hundred, over thirty-plus acres, and I look at Lakota East and Lakota West high schools, you've got the same situation there, the same probability. How long will it take for the school resource officer, even if you hire twenty of them, to really show up to put a stop to it? And I'll tell you what, the gun is not the only thing you got to worry about. What about a vehicle plowing into a school and other things? As an engineer, I can tell you a dozen things that subjugate our kids to danger out there. And they will be found out in time. So all right, got before you today. Are you going to deal in facts? Or are you going to deal in touchy-feely things? Do we care or do we not? Time will judge. By the way, I am the grandson of Bethel Tate's teacher or Bethel Tate principal who allowed guns in school. He taught physics, chemistry, and math and shop class. My dad built a gun in his class. Robert Richards was his name.
Thank you.
From fifty-seven to sixty-three.
Thank you. And we wait until the end to respond to comments. So after Amy, we have Graham George.
Hi, I'm Amy Sensing. This really isn't my thing, so bear with me. I live in six, seven, and five Ashnol, just right across the street. I've got a seventh grader and I've got a second grader. So I just, I wasn't sure what I was going to say when I got here up here. But I want to say, I don't think it's touchy-feely to want to keep guns out of school. It's, I don't think guns are the place for school. I think that SRO officers, SRO officers are great. I think that we may need more. I mean, I think every school should have their own. I think split time is a little rough. But I don't, our kids are already anxious. They're nervous, they're scared. I'm from Paducah, which is right by Marshall County, which, you know, a smaller incident, but an incident nonetheless. It's, it can happen anywhere and I don't know that arming teachers is the way to stop it. You don't want, I don't want my kids to grow up in a world that their school is like built mad, you know, like Russia and America, the mutually assured destruction. I don't want them to grow up feeling like that, feeling that they have to worry every time. And I think that, I don't think it's going to make anybody feel any safer to arm the teachers because I don't think that's the teacher's job. I think teachers are paid to teach our kids. I could never be a teacher. I love the teachers that my kids have had. They're great. I, they care about them, they love them. They should not have to risk their lives for their kids. They, they shouldn't have to make split-second life decisions. And if you allow them to carry guns, they will. They'll feel then that it's their responsibility to stop violence. I think it's their responsibility to keep the kids safe. And that's, I think that's got to be their number-one priority, not whether they have a concealed carry, whether they can keep their gun loaded, you know? And I don't know the details of how anything would be implemented, but I don't really care. I don't think it's, it's not appropriate for our teachers to have to carry or be able to carry, I guess. Armed SRO officers, that's, you know, that's one thing. They, they had extensive gun training. An eight-hour class on gun training, that's not enough. It's, it's just not. You can't expect a teacher, I mean, CPR is a two-day course, right? To be certified in first aid, you take a two-day course. An eight-hour course doesn't, doesn't hold up. You can't expect a teacher to train for eight hours once, I don't know, once a year, however often they're going to do it. And the chance that it comes up, have to make that decision. I think that adding guns into the schools is just kind of like adding fuel to a forest fire. And that's not what you do to put out a forest fire. Block it off, take away the, what, it burns, sorry. So I mean, I think that's it. I just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Graham, you're up. And we have Jenny Hudson. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I should have just signed her. Jeremy York is after that. Jeremiah York. But Graham's up next and Jeremiah's up next.
Were there any guns in the school in farthest south Florida? Teachers didn't have guns. Nobody had guns, even the security officer didn't, weren't inside the building. And Sheriff Jones, as already been mentioned, has offered training for teachers. Nobody wants anybody to have a gun who's not comfortable and doesn't know how to use it. But I wish all of you had seen President Trump last Thursday in Florida. Talked about situations, have a listening session. It was excellent. People were trained, comfortable in having a gun. They should not be a danger. But they could have prevented seventeen kids from getting killed and many others being wounded in the hospital.
After Jeremiah, we have Sylvia McQuire.
Members of the board, thank you for your service. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I pray the Lord Jesus Christ opens your heart and mind to receive these words. This is about our teachers and their God-given right to self-defense on school grounds. Genesis nine-six. Whoso sheddeth man's blood, by man shall his blood be shed; for in the image of God hath he made man. In this verse, God establishes the death penalty for murder. God also establishes the right to kill someone who is trying to murder you. The inalienable right to life is confirmed in the Declaration of Independence, and the right to self-defense is protected by Amendment Two of the U.S. Constitution. Whoso sheddeth man's blood, by man shall his blood be shed. Nehemiah four-seventeen through eighteen. Nehemiah four, seventeen through eighteen. They that build on the wall, and they that bear burdens, and they that laded, did the work with one hand, and with the other held the sword; for every one of the builders had his sword girded on his loins, and so built. At this time in Israel's history, the Jews were rebuilding the broken-down walls of Jerusalem, and their enemies were threatening their lives. The governor of Israel, Nehemiah, declared to all the princes, rulers, and the people to stand and fight, arming themselves while they worked. So too today, our Ohio legislature, with the consent of our governor, has approved our teachers being able to arm themselves against the threat of mass murderers that are shooting up our public schools. Since our schools are gun-free zones to law-abiding citizens, violent criminals are mass murdering our teachers and students around the country. The Ohio Constitution states in our Bill of Rights, the people have the right to bear arms for their defense and security. Our local government is a government of law, not the whims of men. To have authority, one must be under authority. This is the authority that has been delegated to you. Anything contrary to this is what the Declaration of Independence calls pretended legislation. It is time to apply the constitutional solution and empower our teachers, who are putting their lives on the line every day. We insist that our teachers are free to exercise the right to carry concealed on campus and receive proper training to do so. Butler County Sheriff Jones is more than willing to do this free of charge. This must happen, and this must happen quickly. I urge this Lakota School Board to immediately vote and approve these measures. Thank you for your time, and may the Holy Spirit guide your decision.
Thank you. We have Sylvia up, and then next after Sylvia is Rich Hoffman.
Do you want to remind them, addresses?
Yes, they have it signed up, but please state your name and address when you speak.
Yeah, so I'm Sylvia McQuire, and I live at six, five, thirty-one Wilderness Trail School. No, I think it's fine here. Thank you, though. You can still hear me, right? If it's up here, yeah, I think we're fine. Thank you. So, good evening. I'm a Lakota parent, and in the first place, I want to say that I love the Lakota School District, and I want to commend everyone at Lakota for everything you do, day in and day out, to keep our schools safe. I know there's a lot that goes behind the scenes, but I especially want to thank you for increasing the number of school resource officers in our district in the last, with the last levy. I understand that some school districts in Ohio already have teachers carrying guns for self-defense. Those districts do not have officers on site, and their schools are located in rural areas where police officers would take terribly, terribly long to arrive in case of an emergency. That is not like the case for Lakota. We are very lucky to have school resource officers on site, and also very lucky to have local police officers that would arrive quickly. In addition, I would like to encourage Lakota to keep exploring technological advances to keep our district safe, such as panic buttons to sound an alarm and dispatch police, access to real-time video surveillance, automated visitor management systems and access controls. Such technology is becoming more and more accessible. I personally actually have a panic button at home and also at work that is connected to nine-one-one. I also have real-time access to video surveillance from my home, through my smartphone, and at work, a couple managers, myself included, we have access to video surveillance of the building and parking lot from a second monitor on our desks. I also want to encourage principals, teachers, school administrators, and the school board to continue working with students to find safe and appropriate ways to raise awareness about school safety. Some students may want to participate in national plan activities. If our youth want to speak up and be heard and make a difference, we should support them. And this reminds me of a very pretty poem you might have heard before. I just wanted to read it real quick. It says, "Our children are not our children; they are the sons and daughters of life longing for itself. They come through us but not from us, and though they are with us, they belong not to us. We may give in our love but not our thoughts, for they have their own thoughts. We may house their bodies but not their souls, for their souls dwell in the house of tomorrow, which we cannot visit, not even in our dreams. We may strive to be like them but seek not to make them like us, for life goes not backward no tyrannies with yesterday." So, I'm very encouraged, you know, seeing a lot of young people participating in the debate, and also all the coffee shop chats that I've attended also with, like the superintendent and knowing that students also participate in those chats. Thank you.
Rich Hoffman, and then afterwards, Jerry Z.
Rich Hoffman, four, nine, nine, four, Rockdale Road. It's been a long time since I've been up here. Last time was many years ago, when about three of you, we had a lot of interesting debates over the years. Some new people, I was against levies for probably two decades, but I think what's happened in the last five or six years has been very good. I think, Jenny, you've done a good job. I think the debates often bring about the best in people, because it allows ideas to combat and find out what's going to work and what doesn't. But years ago, when we were doing the levy, Mike was one of them, another Spark reporter, asked me a question, "What would you ever do, Mr. Hoffman, to support a school levy?" And the more we argued, the madder I got, and the less I was wanting to pass a school levy, and I couldn't see any reason for it, because money and all that kind of thing. But I will say that this issue, I have, my wife and I went to Lakota, my daughter's graduated from Lakota, I have grandchildren now and getting ready to go to Lakota, so I really care about what happens at Lakota. I'm not going anywhere, I'm going to be here for quite a while. So, this issue, the CCW issue that Sheriff Jones is offering and that has sort of taken flight around the country, I see that Lakota has an opportunity to show some great leadership in this. I think it's an inevitability that's going to happen, and I think a big district like Lakota and Ohio could take quite a role in stepping up to the plate on this. And I'll tell you this much, as much as we've talked about costs and how expensive teachers can be and all that, I think with this issue, if a teacher wanted to sign up for a CCW and be a first responder in the school, I would support a significant bonus to their pay, something to merit, keeping up with the skills it takes, not just taking the eight-hour class, but making it part of the lifestyle so they can be that first responder. I know that first responders in any place of business is, is a great thing. Nobody would want to not have somebody who could treat a heart attack victim or somebody with a serious laceration. And in this situation, you need a first responder that can help take care of things until the pros arrive. And if it buys us twenty seconds or a minute, two minutes, it'd be worth it. And if it costs us to have to go get a levy to pay for those bonuses, I might just support it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jared Jakowski. I live at sixty-nine, twenty-nine Driftwood Lane, and I, assuming that all of you know that Israel is at war constantly, and in nineteen seventy-four, they had a huge school attack, and what did they do? They got busy. They trained their teachers, they built walls, and they had armed guards at the school. They are truly in a war situation. Now, it would be wonderful if we were living still in a society where we could leave our back doors open and not be fearful, but we're no longer there. We are at war. We are at war with immoral people. Okay? Now, we need, then, to train our teachers and to have those teachers who are capable of caring to do so. So, I would, I would hope that you would really consider that without being fearful of guns, because guns don't kill people. People kill people. And there are many situations within that Florida scenario that have not, as far as I'm concerned, answered sufficient questions. How did that killer get into the school? Maybe I'm not informed enough to know that, but I have not been able to, I haven't heard anybody ask that question. How'd he get in? So, the first thing I think we have to do is really control the environment around our schools, and if it looks like a war zone, so be it. It may deter those people who would ordinarily want, thought that they could walk into a school. They shouldn't have to walk into the school. They shouldn't be able to do that. So, please, I think Sheriff Jones is on the right track, and the five hundred teachers that showed up are on the right track. They want to be safe. They want to help their children be safe. Now, I just want to make a comment with Mr. Miller. You said everyone was at the meeting, and you, whatever the meeting that you first talked to, you said, and you said that children, that you even asked for the children's opinion. I'm not sure that the parents were involved in that. And I think the community really does need to have a say in how our schools are being protected. And we need to get away from the attitude that without guns, we're going to have a safe community. It's been shown again and again and again, especially in Washington, D.C. Yeah, they may have the lowest crime, but they have the highest murder rate, because those people who want to kill with guns will kill with guns.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That's all the sign-ins I have. If there's anyone else that would like to come forward, they may do so at this time. Just go ahead.
My name is Samuel Ronan. I found out that I was not.
You need your address.
Two, thirty-seven Creepside Drive. I'm a staff sergeant in the United States Air Force. I spent all of last weekend qualifying with the M4 Carbine rifle. It is a similar weapon to the AR-15. It has a thirty-round magazine capacity in the United States Air Force, which has one purpose and one purpose only, to put as many rounds downrange as possible to eliminate the enemy. And you want to put that in the hands of teachers. You think arming a teacher, a school teacher, like the one who made that STEM program so successful in this school district, you think that teacher's going to stand up to the likes of me and Marines and officers? When there's a gunman out, that's not their job. Their job's to keep children safe and educated. That is not their purpose. In Parkland, there were four officers, four officers on duty. All four of them succumbed to cowardice in the face of danger. You mean to tell me that you can assure that every single officer who wears the uniform, every single former veteran would stand up and fight against an oncoming enemy? You think you can make that guarantee when four fail? Now, I can say I would stand up and fight. I have left active duty to run for office because I see my country deteriorating day in and day out, and I find it reprehensible. Because what do we decide? What do we choose to focus our issues on? Blaming Muslims as terrorists? Is that what we are? This is not who we are. Blaming children with guns, access to those guns, killing their students in the school districts? Who's to blame? The child or the school district not having access to mental health care? To the counselors, teachers being able to be paid to actually offer those services and those support structures? Threatening children's reprisal because they stand up for their rights, because they do not want to be in a prison system, they want to be in a school? Arming our teachers isn't safe. Arming our teachers with anything less than the tools and resources they need, pencils, computers, resources, counselors, being able to reach their students, having smaller classrooms with less students, so they can make an interpersonal relationship and perhaps help out with those issues that they may suffer at home. That's where our teachers feed, that's how we fight back. We do not do if I hide behind guns and biblical verses. That isn't what's failing in our society. We, we as the adults have failed our society. We decided to look past the issues. We see poverty, we see disparity in the workforce, we focus on allowing people to get away with murder and corruption. We do nothing. We bow our heads, we say our vote doesn't matter, we say our ethics don't matter. Our children are ignorant. They don't know what they're talking about.
You need to wrap up.
I'm sorry. I just could not let that go unspoken. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marie Spruance. I'm an eighth-grade student at Lakota Ridge Junior High School, and I really don't think that'd help having teachers armed in schools. I'm already so anxious with all my schoolwork and stuff, I don't need, like, this threat of another gun in my school. I just feel that, I just feel that people might miss, I know the teachers won't misuse the guns. They're trained eight hours, I suppose, but somebody else might get a hold of a gun. Sometimes I might not trust my other students. I don't believe that adding more guns will help out. I'm getting repetitive here. Sorry.
Okay.
Kids today should just be worrying about, like, getting their homework turned in on time, making sure that they get the best grade that they can. They don't need another threat of somebody breaking into their school to shoot them. I'm sorry. Can't be helped.
Hi, my name is Christina Sewell. Address is seven thousand seven Kelly Marie Court. I'm coming on behalf of my home community, which is Parkland. I went to that school district of Broward County Schools. I graduated in nineteen ninety-seven. My friends are teachers down there. They don't want to be armed. They want to be armed with technology, they want to be armed with books, they want to be armed with the materials to teach their students. The issue is, we need deputies in the school, two deputies per school. We need on-school psychiatrists to help with the mental issues that the kids are facing today. If you look at the statistics, twenty percent of high schoolers have depression. Why are they depressed? They don't have social interaction like we did twenty years ago. They're not going outside and playing and communicating with each other. They're all glued to their social media. And as my nine-year-old would say, that he learned at Van Goren, "We don't return a hurt with a hurt." We need to get our kids' mental stability back up. We need to love these children. These children have access to guns because there are so many guns. There's an influx of guns from twenty years ago. Guns are not the answer. I want my teachers to teach my kids, and I want my kids to have a safe environment. And I feel they would have a safe environment with school deputies there that are trained to protect. And I would really love to see school psychiatrists at every single school. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one. Clearly, this is a contentious issue. There's many opinions on many sides. The board did have a discussion on this on Sunday. We discussed at that point that we plan to continue to discuss this issue. We are not ready to make a decision at this point in time this evening. We plan to meet with our extended safety committee, which will include the school resource officers, will include supervisors from the police department, will include our administration. We plan to look at all issues on this subject, both from a law enforcement angle as well as from a mental health angle, looking at barricades, looking at every aspect of our school's security plan. Nothing is off the table. We understand that this is not a one-size solution. There is not any one magic piece that is going to solve our school's security issue or any school's security issue. Certainly, if there were, all schools would have done that at this point. We'll continue to study this issue, we'll continue to look at every aspect and try to find the best solution for our students. All of us have the best interest of our students at heart. All of us want to find the very best solution for our students. My own kids are out of the schools, and we all want the very best. What my own daughter said to me the next day, "I feel like it's a matter of when, not if," that's certainly hard for all of us to deal with and not something we ever want any student to feel. I still remember the day after another shooting, actually, when Brad was actually the principal of the town, and it was the day after, actually, Cindy Hook, and it was pajama day. And as I let my child out in the carpool line, and he was there in his pajamas getting my child out of my car.
That's a picture.
And I thought, and I thought, you know what? He is one of those folks that would have put his life on the line for my kid in that situation that day. But no, no school personnel should have to do that. We all want... We all want to do everything we can to make sure these kids are safe, and that's everything we're going to do and keep doing and will continue to do. And I don't know what else to say at this point.
May I say something?
Certainly.
Yeah, there are educators and staff members who would put their lives on the line to protect students. I think most people would. The football coach of Florida, for example. This is a very emotional and contentious issue, as you mentioned. I don't believe that flooding schools with guns is probably a good idea, however, I don't think we should prevent highly qualified educators from caring if they want to do so. I think we owe it to the community to look at every option. Some options we've been looking at in increased security, but I wouldn't discount anything at this point. Again, I said highly qualified, and we need to define what that is. But I think we don't want to dismiss things without full consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to say anything at this time?
I agree with Mr. Parnell. I won't close any doors on any options that are available to us. I think we see the impact on our students when they don't feel safe in an environment. And I think there have to be a lot of guardrails that are put into place if we do move forward in that area, and I think there's a lot that we need to talk about. Security isn't one thing, it's a multi-layered approach. And we're going to spend quite a bit of time and diligence making sure that we've looked at every option available to us and considered what we need to do.
Let me kind of say one more thing, sorry. You have two sides, you arm all the teachers and the other side, they don't arm the teachers. I'm kind of amazed, has anyone actually asked the teachers? Because I believe 99.9% of teachers would say, "I don't want even a gun near me." So that's the other issue as well. Ask the teachers.
I personally think that, yes, we need to ask the educators, but we also need to ask law enforcement personnel from around a lot of different areas. You know, we've heard a lot from Sheriff Jones, we've heard a ton from this area, but I would like to look bigger too, what's happening in the country? What is law enforcement, what are other areas saying that this is best practice? This is what we should be engaging in. I agree that everything should be on the table, and I think that as a team, like we said yesterday, we met for a good amount of time, and we had a great discussion. And what I love about this team up here is we all deeply passionately care about the kids in our schools. I've got a little girl going in next year. I deeply care and I'm passionate about the safety of our schools, and so we want to look at it that way. And I was in a building. I was a principal in the building just recently. And it's, it's, it's hard for me even to think about having guns in the building, but again, I think that we all need to be open and just saying, what does this look like? How do we move forward? And what is best for our kids' safety and for our community? And I think that if we all keep that focused as a board, we're going to come up with some great solutions around that.
I agree with you, Brad, and I think it's hard for any of us to imagine violence like this toward children or unarmed staff. It's hard to even imagine, to wrap our minds around it. And moving past that barrier of what are our best solutions is, is going to be hard, but we need to have that open conversation and continue. And I do believe everybody is coming to the table with a, "Let's look for the best solutions."
All right. With that, I think we'll move forward. Did Matt want to, or Jenny?
No, I think, I think all of you said it really good. I think we see this as an ongoing issue for our kids and for our staff, and I agree with all the sentiments at the table.
All right. With that, we'll move to an update on our strategic planning process that we have begun. And so we have, do you want to do an introduction of Diane from LEI?
Sure. As she, as she's getting settled, as she's getting settled, Diane Egbers from LEI, which is Leadership Acceleration, is working with our district to help us with our strategic mission and strategic planning process. And I've already been impressed with the early work that she's done, and looking forward to helping, having her help us with our direction, not over just this coming year, but a three-year and six-year outlook. So, that's your big intro.
Thanks, Matt. It's a privilege to serve Lakota School District and pleased to be here to share an update with the board. And so, it's probably best to begin with the strategic planning process. You have that in front of you, and just for purposes of anyone else present, I'm just going to share what those elements are, and then share the key milestones and the involvement, especially the board in that process, but as well, parents and community and staff and students. So, we began the process by selecting a strategic planning, a representative strategic planning team. On that team are board members, administrators, teachers, and building leaders. And we looked at setting up the internal and external analysis. So there'll be 14 different focus groups we'll be engaged in over the next six to eight weeks. That'll range from community members, parents, staff, and leaders as well as students. And so as we then bring all of that information and data that we've gathered back, that will then commence with the first board planning session. And so at that time, we will look at larger strategic themes, information from both focus groups and survey. And as you turn to that second page, the board that you have, you'll see kind of the number one deliverable there, if you look at the circles, is to participate in the development of the strategic themes, and then to review all the internal and external analysis at that time. And we move on to actual planning and delivery of, number two is with the review of the internal and external analysis, then we would commence on, in a six-year plan, the three-year objectives, three-year growth indicators, and then one-year goals. So that would be the next element that the board would look at, the board would review. All the while, continuing to get community input, parent input, staff, and then student input, as well as leaders. And then the fourth deliverable is really to confirm the elements of the plan. At that point, if there are any financial implications and recommendations, that is when those would be made of the board. And then the fourth milestone you'll see there is delivery and approval of the strategic plan, including any of the resource and financial implications for the first three years of the plan. Okay? So what questions can I entertain? What questions do you have for the process? I know there's a lot there to consume, but what questions can I answer?
It's intended to be a three-year plan, is that correct?
No, it's intended to be a six-year plan. So there are three-year growth strategies and then a refresh at that three-year point. And so what we find with districts is that that seems to be a really great horizon, time to really have some achievement in that first three years, and then to relook at what has changed, what is new, and to reset then, the three-year objectives and growth indicators for the remaining three years. So it is intended to be a six-year plan.
What about the strategic plan we put in place a few years ago? Is that all just scrap, we're starting over from zero, or is that incorporated into this?
The plan review is incorporated into this, just to look at, you know, what the history has been. As we meet with the strategic planning team, that will come into focus along with all the internal analysis and external data, would be just the history and review of the previous plan.
And this process that we're undertaking, I need to schedule an interview with you because I missed mine, sorry.
We can't take him anywhere.
This plan at the end will include quantifiable metrics for a measurement of success? Okay. Thank you.
It will, yes, with goals and measures.
Thank you.
Sure.
Diane, what's the timeline? Like when you expect to have the, uh...
Sure. I have a very detailed project manager who's working closely with Matt's assistant, Melissa. We have a week-by-week plan that goes through September. So the September board meeting would be the final approval as we're planning it today. The only exceptions to that would be, I would say, delays on your behalf. If something would come up and, you know, take higher, be of higher order, then we would push that back.
There may be a few of those.
Excuse me?
There may be a few of those.
There already have been.
That comes up, but the intent would be September. Okay, thank you. Yes. Any other questions?
Diane, you just mentioned some of the other school districts you worked with.
Sure. Yeah, we worked with numerous school districts here in the Cincinnati region, school districts you would recognize, Mason, Sycamore, Merrimont, Indian Hill, a lot of districts as well as Loveland, as we think about outside of this market, Baxley, Upper Arlington, Oakwood, Cincinnati Public Schools also in this region, so lots of different school districts. And we also do quite a bit of work in higher ed as well as for-profit, and then lots of work in the hospital industry. And so we bring a unique perspective, we believe, to education. We have varied planning experience over 20 years across multiple industries, and we think that that brings a unique and valuable perspective, because we feel they're best practices in every industry to learn from, and so we bring that to the party as well.
So you've had an opportunity to meet with four of the five board members, but are you able to offer any high-level thoughts on what have come out of those conversations?
Not yet. You know, I have somebody in my office typing those up, and I have yet to review those themes, so not this moment. I would say by Wednesday, Thursday of this week, I will have the summary of the board comments, but not until I spend some time with Todd.
Better get on it, Todd.
Without my input, it's pretty much worthless.
Your homework's already late, buddy.
And I'd really like somebody on my team completely objective, to look at all of my notes, and, you know, just give me their reflection, and then I correspond that with, you know, everything that I know and I've heard, and then we get to some really good data. So as soon as I talk to Todd, would be happy to reflect back to the board, you know, what those, those insights are.
That'd be good to hear. We'll put some pressure on him.
I'll make myself available.
So any other thoughts?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Diane Roachwick, I'm just going to not really put you on the spot, but I'm just going to share this also since she's here. Julie had sent out an email to the board about Grantus Hope, and Diane started Grantus Hope, and so this is a separate, separate entity totally, but this fall, we're bringing the HOPE squads, which are peer-to-peer suicide prevention groups to both East and West high schools. So, I don't know if you know this part or not, you probably do, but the main, I'm not going to say it right, but the main doctor lead involved is Dr. Hudnall.
Dr. Hudnall?
Who is out of Utah. He is going to, we just got this finalized today, he'll be making a presentation for interested families, school board members, staff, right here next week, on Tuesday, March 6th, from 6:30 to 7:30, to introduce HOPE squad to our district. And it was a, it's a really good get for us, so to speak, with somebody that has his level of expertise and what we want to do moving forward, so we were able to jump on that again pretty quick, just was finalized by Mrs. Longworth earlier today, so wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and so just a quick note in addition to that, Matt, it's a behavioral-based peer-to-peer program, has 10 years of research over 400 schools across the nation, and the unique thing about the program is it's really intended to transform the culture over time, you know, so that every kid has an unconditional friend. So when you think of kids that are really suffering, they tend to isolate themselves, and it's a peer-to-peer outreach every single week of the school year to ensure that kids consistently get reached out to, have, are in the greatest need, to try to escalate those kids to adults to get help. And so it's a unique program in that way, and on average, there's a 28% reduction in suicide in all the schools that the program exists in. And where the program was launched, most schools experienced nine years of zero suicide. And so, there's just some really great data behind the program as well. So we'll be interested to bring that to Lakota.
And when I was reading about it, one of the things that I thought was interesting is it actually asks the kids to nominate those kids in the school that they feel they could trust the most, and that kids, Danes typically rise to the top, and that's how the kids are chosen to be the leaders.
Yes.
And I thought that that was really interesting, that the kids are able to nominate the one they would trust the most.
Well, and it's vital to the success of the program because kids know best, they know who they would turn to, and also it allows a whole spectrum of kids to leave within the school that may not be the captain of the football team or the president of student council, but they're the most caring, kind, compassionate kids. And so, just tremendous opportunity, we believe, to support the ongoing mental wellness of Lakota. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
We have, our next meeting with our community is for parents of students with special needs on March 8th at East, at 6:30 to 8:00. Any other?
Homeschooling parents on March 19th at 6:30.
All right.
And we have an in-house meeting tomorrow at 4:30.
Right. The what?
The, we have a meeting for staff.
Staff, specialized staff, yeah.
Is that here?
Yes.
Butler Tech?
Butler Tech met last week. They continue the work on the Swordsville campus. They expect to be able to do something with that property by next year, and they're also continuing work on Phase Two of the Butler's Bioscience Facility on Senday Road, and expect that to be open probably 19, 20 for adult and student, because they're at more, more than at capacity, and they have a waiting list for the Bioscience Program, so that'll be a wonderful thing. There is student success information, I'll make sure it goes out in the next packet for everybody.
I have a question. I saw a parent was very excited that their child had gotten into the welding program because they said they were one of 25 students out of 100 that had applied. So do we have statistics overall of how many of our students were able to get in versus how many tried to get in?
We can certainly ask for that information.
Yeah.
Would you follow up with John?
Sure.
And then also, I guess there's a 10th grade program now?
For welding specifically?
Just, no, overall, at Butler Tech now, that 10th grade students are starting to go to Butler Tech?
I have not heard that yet, but not saying no. I'll find out.
Do you have a specific email about that?
No, just parents excited that they're going into this 10th grade program at Butler Tech, so I was like, huh, didn't know.
Actually, I, timely, I had a breakfast meeting with John Graff this morning and Marlon Stiles, and so we were talking about more vocational opportunities for kids, and what does that look like, and sort of plotting how to take over Southwest Ohio in terms of offerings and opportunities for kids. And so I'll circle back with John tomorrow.
And Butler Tech is still on the cap in terms of the funding formula, which means that there at this point is not additional funding for adding additional students, so we continue to work at that legislatively because that will certainly open up more capacity.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I knew you had to have something on space issues as well. Legislative Committee?
Aunt Jenny? Anything?
I really don't have anything additional to report.
I really don't have anything additional to report. We have subcommittees that will start again next week with the state funding task force that I'm on. The work continues to move along there.
I have a legislative meeting Wednesday with BASSA. So you should have more information. Then I'll let you talk about report card.
We've been invited, and I know Matt and I are going, Brad's trying to clear his schedule, to a second interested party meeting on Thursday, March 1st. And that will be about the report card bill that Representative Duffy is putting forward for changes to that. So, we'll be reporting back on that next time.
And if I could jump in on that, there are other bills related to that, that are, that are going in through at the same time. So what I think will happen is there'll be some sort of caucus to pick, which bits and pieces from both, or three, really, but they're out there. And so I think what that tells me is there's going to be a change. Hopefully it's good.
Do you want to talk about House Bill 512?
No, go ahead.
So there's also a bill underway to combine some departments at the state level. I think there's some mixed feedback on whether or not that would be a positive. It would move, it would move some departments out from under the State Board of Education, which as you know is half-elected, and the rest are appointed by the governor. And it would move those departments completely under the governor. So I think there's some thought around whether or not that's, that's the best route to go. So, we'll track that.
Also combining departments, Department of Ed, Higher Ed, and Workforce Development, which in my opinion would be okay. But let's give some local control back on some of these issues.
I do see some benefit to removing redundancy in government, but it would take away local control, I think, to a large extent. So we'll continue to track it. I will be going, I should have said this under Butler Tech, but I guess it's both. I'll be going to Washington next week to a national policy seminar, which will include legislative visits, specifically to focus on career technical education and all of those issues. So I'll be bringing back more information for all of you from that. And again, Matt had already talked about, he'd mentioned briefly, but just, we'll continue to keep the board in the loop, the school safety summit that Rick Prince, our fire chief, brought together. That was out of a conversation that he had with the sheriff. And they felt that it was important to think outside of the box and do some things differently than we've been doing it. So we were invited to be, be at the table for that. The next meeting is March 15th. And again, they're looking at, are the regulations still the appropriate regulations? Are procedures that we've been doing for 50 years still the right procedures, given the current security issues? So, we'll keep the board in the loop on it.
And sort of capturing all this, too, like, like things that we need to talk to our legislators about, as we have these presentations tonight. You look at the young man that was in second grade, second grade? He was second grader, who did, who did what he was doing. Plus our teacher, we featured, I mean, those, those kind of can delve into the career tech world, if you will. And so they're doing things that are different, outside of the box. And we, I see in our district, in a lot of districts, that's coming up through the lower-grade levels. So I wonder how we can keep that going, as our kids who don't go the vocational track, but want to do things like that, like STEAM opportunities, can do that at junior high and high school. Because I think, in a lot of ways, the younger generation coming up have a different skill set than maybe what we've been used to. So that's something we got to work on.
It's capacity as well. I mean, Butler Tech, it's 10 associate school districts. Lakota alone is 16,500 students, and we serve about 3,000 students through Butler Tech. So there are a lot of opportunities that students don't have an, have access to. So I think we have to continue to have the conversation about how we embed that.
So, for the Office of Outreach, Diversity, and Inclusion, I was going to talk about Grant's Hope and Dr. Hudnall coming. So, she accelerated that. I will tell you, too, that, that Office Department and I met today with both of our high school principals, in terms of our transgender population, and where we're at with the needs of our kids. And it came down to, what are the individual needs? And so we're still looking at that. We're talking about PD for staff, and what does that look like? But it was a really good starting point for moving forward. So.
We also had, under the Parent Engagement Series with Angie Brown, there was a building that's around the community, One Culture at a Time, conversation that was, we had a really nice conversation with our friends from the Islamic Center. And we had a student on the panel. And again, as always, our students are always, we always enjoy our students. And Kelly and I had an opportunity to attend that this week, and they did a very nice job with that. So, board recommendations, we have approval of the Boys and Girls Lacrosse as a nurse thoracic board. This is something that has been discussed for quite some time. Do I have a motion to approve?
Many years.
Many years.
Still moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
They've done, I think, a great job of following the process. It was, we put in place several years ago, and I think they've been very compliant with that. And they've certainly provided great opportunities for our students, so.
And many students are impacted.
Yes.
I think you said nearly 200 and some.
200, when you include cheerleading for Lacrosse, which I didn't know that was a thing until this came forward.
Yes. So Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Do I have a motion for Treasurers Items A and B, the approval of the board minutes and approval of financials?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have Superindependent Recommendations A and B, approval of personnel items and approval of donations. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a...
A second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Closing comments? Start of the sentence?
Sure. No, I just appreciate the board's work on all the issues that we've been dealing with this year. And I thought we got through a lot of things yesterday, and it was just good to keep talking things out in ways to make our school district even better. So thanks for all of that. I do want to mention that our State of the Schools will be March 13th. We'll have two events. One will be at Worthington for the Business Community, a part of the Chamber of Commerce, and then 7:30 that night at West, we will be having for the community as well. And we'll have students and staff presenting. So, looking forward to that.
Just appreciate the, always the students who come, and they were adorable tonight. And then also to see the passion from the educator. Wow. I can't imagine being a student in her classroom. It would be, I mean, just contagious, her energy and her passion for that. So that was great. Also, you know, our community, we have a passionate community. We do. And whether, no matter what side of this you're on, I think everybody's on the side of what is the best answer for, you know, making sure that our kids feel safe, and our staff feel safe on a daily basis. And just like Matt mentioned, I appreciate the fact that you all can discuss the issues, and look at all options, and, and do what's best for this community and the school. So, appreciate it. That's it.
I'm thankful also that the board has agreed to be open to all options, and really appreciate that. I know these are hard discussions, but they're critical discussions for our district. I'm also thankful to our community who came out and expressed thoughts on both sides of the issue. And please continue to send us, or to give us solutions, and things you think we need to be considering, because that will be our work for the next several months. And it's not an easy discussion, but I'm, I'm really thankful for it, and thankful, thankful for the respectfulness that it was approached with as well.
I don't think I have anything really additional to add. I just love having the teacher spotlight. I seriously, her, she was contagious. But, you know, like we say all the times, when the students come up here to present, she's just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, there are so many great educators and staff in this district. They're doing incredible things. So if we can continue to highlight what they're doing, they'll just continue to raise the district. And so, I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the conversation that we're having as a board, and the board momentum that we have in the district. Can't say it enough.
Have any further comments?
Yeah, once you get down to Todd's eyes, pretty much everything has been said. So, yeah. I do love the staff spotlight. Seriously, she could make me like science. I mean, science.
We have lots of them.
I can't, yeah, I can't wait to see. And again, like, Brad's, I think, just the tip of the iceberg, what we've got out there, so.
New housekeeping items. ACT tomorrow for our students, so good luck to all of our students tomorrow. We're so excited, I'm sure, to be taking the ACT this week. If you're not on the mailing list, or email list, I guess, for a look around Lakota, as I kept going down, it was chock full of information this week. I mean, just so many great things going on around the district. So, make sure that you're on that distribution list, if you're not. One of the things I noticed was Ethicon is now in our internship program. My daughter's at Ohio State, and she said that there, that's considered the crown jewel of internships. So, I thought if, you know, at Ohio State, it's the crown jewel, and we've got it for our high school kids, that's pretty impressive. Had the opportunity to go see Shrek at Lakota West this past weekend.
It was amazing.
Absolutely amazing each time. All of our productions and theatrical performances at both East and West are always phenomenal, and you think they cannot outdo the production they did before.
It's amazing.
And they somehow manage to each time. So congratulations to those kids. Amazing. They do it with the live, the live orchestra in the back, and they raise the curtain at the end, and you realize that that's what happens. So, it's just, they do a phenomenal job.
Representative Lang attended yesterday, and he said, "That was not high school theater. That was just theater."
Yeah.
It was very well done.
They really can take it on the road. They do a great job. Again, for transportation, we've heard a lot of some challenges at West in the freshman building. Our partners at Edge Teen Center have said that they will take their van now, and they have a 14-person van and transport the kids at the West freshman building up to the Edge Teen Center. At first, there was going to be a fee, and I now saw that then, it's now posted as that fee has been waived, so they must have found somebody to sponsor that. And I saw on their website that they have plenty of spots left. So if there's some parents who are still struggling there, that's an opportunity for people to take advantage of, so if anybody would like to do that. And then my last on my laundry list here is Pi Day, continuing on our science theme. Our leads, our gifted parent group, every year helps us organize Pi Day on March 9th this year at West, which is a great celebration of our STEAM opportunities around the district, partner with many organizations, and have a great celebration of science and math around the district. So that will be March 9th at West. So please come out and join us on March 9th. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Jenny, please call the roll.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.